Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 10th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Agents. Councilman Edwards, you lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did he say me this? Did he say me?
Yeah. I said Caleb. Can you lead, please? Yeah. I said Edwards. It's all right. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Yes. Councilman Kincaid.
President.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Edwards.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
He is here. He's stepping back in.
Yes, he's here. Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilwoman Messenger.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
We have motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Minutes are approved. Wanted to let everyone know, Resolution 2020-02, which is the consideration of the fiscal plan for the Martin Lemongrass Stewart Indiana Trails Fund property annexation to the city of Lebanon is being held, as well as Ordinance 2020-02, consideration of the Martin Lemongrass Stewart Indiana Trails Fund property annexation to the city of Lebanon is being held as well. So, first item up is the Ordinance 2020-01, consideration of a planned unit development rezone and ordinance for proposed mixed-use development called Waterford. And this ordinance is on second reading. Turn it over to Ben Bontrager to introduce. This is Ordinance 2020-01.
I'll give you the nickel tour here, since we did a more detailed presentation last month, and I'll go low-tech and just kind of put the concept plan on the overhead for you here. Just to remind everybody, the PUD rezone that's being considered tonight, ordinance, the ordinance that the mayor mentioned, is for the properties you see here in the colors, the green, blue, yellow, and purple areas. The other portions of the project, the overall project, are part of the annexation that will be continued to the next meeting, and will be part of this area to the north here. So, the PUD rezone right now encompasses these properties you see here. So, just a real quick over for you.
Hey, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah.
But just for those that might be listening, they may not know what PUD is.
Yes.
So, make sure, just take.
Yeah, I'll walk through. Yeah, absolutely. So, just to walk through here, this is the Waterford planned unit development. PUD is a short acronym for Planned Unit Development. What that means is it's a rezoning process that's typically used for larger-scale projects like this, so it allows them the ability to, in essence, look at our standards and write the standards most appropriate for the overall development. As you can see here, the PUD allows for additional, for different use districts in the overall development. If you want standard zoning, these would all be different zoning classifications in each one individually. This allows them to establish the underlying zoning districts for each one of the districts, allow some flexibility on the actual boundaries of it, because it's all conceptual, but then allows them to write appropriate standards associated with the development. So, they will then look at the uses, and then also the development standards associated with each one of those districts, and write those standards specifically to this development. As you saw, the PUD ordinance is about 16 or 18 pages long, so they have written some very detailed architectural and development standards associated with each one of these districts. Just for quick review, the yellow area is what I would call a more traditional auto-oriented commercial and office development that you'll see more adjacent to the interstate. The blue area is industrial, what you would typically see like in our Lebanon Business Park, although we do have some restrictions on sizes of buildings and increased architectural standards in what you see in our Lebanon Business Park. The green is residential area, and would also include elements associated with the golf course development. And then the lighter purple color that's on 400 East would represent the Village Center development, that would be more of your pedestrian-scale developments, mixed-use development associated with the neighborhood. As we recall from last time, the overall development includes a significant acreage to the north here that is primarily industrial or residential, and a couple of properties to the east of 400 that would extend the Village Center and residential to the east of 400. The PUD rezone, like I said, tonight encompasses just these elements. Once the annexation has been adopted by, or if the council chooses to adopt the annexation ordinance, there'll be a 30-day waiting period. After that period is up, then they will come back and amend the PUD ordinance to include the additional properties for the overall development. So, tonight is just this PUD rezone for this portion here. It's about 900, between 900 and 1,000 acres. The total development's a little over 2,000 acres. So, this represents roughly half of the overall development. Does anyone have anything more? If there are any questions, I know we had them come to the council work section last week and talked about some additional information, but if there's any specific questions or concerns, the council, I'd be happy to answer them, and certainly Steve Hanke, his entire development team's here, to answer any questions that I can't address.
Any questions for Ben, from the council?
I do have a question, Ben.
Yes, sir.
For the zones, are there any opportunities, or are there any reasons why the roads and the zones are laid out the way they are? I understand the industrial and the office-type spaces along 65 makes sense, but the pink area along 400, is there any opportunity to move that somewhere else in the development?
I think from the perspective of access, they do want some visibility on a main road. Some of the users there might want some access along the main road. That likely won't be a major, you know, four- or six-lane corridor through there anyway, so there is, but I'll let them talk a little bit about that. In terms of, you know, other road layouts, those are all extremely conceptual. There may not end up being a road there at all until they really start laying this out as getting additional sections. Just again, to remind everybody, both in the audience and on the council, this is step one of multi-steps that will go into the development of this property. This will probably be 10 different sections over the next 15 or 20 years that develop out. As each one of those sections come in, there'll be additional detail, so people asking about road layouts and detention, and what's the lot sizes. We'll see all that specifically as each one of those sections come in, and that'll go back through Plan Commission for approvals there. So, people that are impacted by each one of those sections will be notified when those come in, and they'll be able to see more specific road layouts and lot layouts, and more details on the exact product type that's being proposed in those areas, et cetera. So, this is highly conceptual this time, but they may be able to address a little bit here in a second about, you know, the location of the Village Center, why it was appropriate to put it there on 400.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Yeah. Hey, Ben.
Yes, sir.
400 East, we don't take care of any of that currently, or we do, or what's the status of that?
I'd have to, maybe Kevin'd be able to answer that. I know some sections of that are currently in city limits, where we're adjacent to it here. I don't know the agreement we necessarily have with the county of which sections we maintain versus what they maintain, or if the.
Are we taking any roads in on this particular?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Like I said, some of this may already be in the city, but with the annexation, we'd be taking additional.
Okay.
Sections of road in.
Yeah, whenever we annex adjacent to a road, we take any road that's adjacent to the city, but it's not the entire road, right? So, we don't have the entire section of 400 East, so usually we enter type of our local agreement with the county. If they're already building 400 East, then we let them, you know, keep their plow down the whole way, right? So, we have interlocal agreements that way with, you know, we have that on John Bar Road, you know, other roads like that.
Right.
So, we kind of do that. But the more we touch it against it, right, the more likely we'll take care of the entire thing.
Right. I'll let Mr. Hanke address the questions about location of Village Center.
Good evening. Steve Hanke, 3524 Clavestates Drive, Carmel, Indiana. Yeah, part of the reasoning for the location of that is, a number of developments over the years have located Village Centers many times within and inside of it, and basically they simply do not work very well inside the development. And what you want, these Village Centers are available for the public, you know, use also, and so by placing them on Road 400, it's more easily accessible to the, not only the public, but also, you know, to our residents, as far as getting in and out and having access to them. Again, as I said, there've been a number of on the north side tried to put them inside, but the problem is, is people are reluctant to go inside to shop, because they think, well, should I go in that neighborhood? The residents inside the neighborhood, it's just more traffic that creates in the neighborhood, and so therefore, you want to try and put it on a corridor-type road. We did the same thing at Bridgewater, with development on 146th Street, so we moved to there. Same thing with Chatham, we're doing it on 191st Street and 31, and this was a likely scenario. You don't want to do it over by 65, that's more of a commercial-type area. This creates more of a quaint Village-type feel.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Ken or Steve, do you guys want to say anything about the ordinance? Sorry, you just sat down.
That's all right. No, we're really excited about the property. We've really been working on it pretty diligently for the last five or six months when we were able to acquire the property. We like to do larger projects like this from the standpoint that we can create a lot more amenities. You know, you're creating a lifestyle, you're creating trails, there's already a trail, rail trail in that area that we can turn into great trails. What we have is you can create a clubhouse, an area, golf course, that type thing, which becomes an attraction. It becomes an attraction for quality development. People want to come to that. When we started developing Bridgewater back around '02, everybody said, Westwood was just beginning to grow at that time, everybody said, well, people won't cross 146th Street, they won't leave Carmel to go to that. We created amenity, we created a lifestyle-type community, that got people, you know, going there. Same thing with Chatham Hills, too far north, people aren't going to go there. But when you create, when you create the opportunity that the entire family can utilize the development, from walking trails to indoor pools, to outdoor pools, to fitness centers, to all those type things, it becomes almost a resort, you know, within the community. And so, the same thing can apply here. I think the location is fabulous, easy access to Indianapolis, to the north side, and so that's why when we became aware of the property, you know, for sale, we saw it as a quality development to bring to Lebanon.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any discussion from council at the moment?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'll have Rob read on second reading, and then I'll open up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, this is ordinance 2020-01. That is amending ordinance number 07-16, the Unified Development Ordinance. As we discussed last meeting, the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission considered a petition filed with the commission requesting an amendment to the UDO and to the zoning map for the real estate that's all set forth in Exhibit A. The commission forwarded docket 20-04 after a public hearing was held on January 21st, 2020, with a favorable recommendation by a vote of six to zero in accordance with Indiana Code. The Secretary of the Commission then certified the action of the commission and sent it to the council on January 22nd, 2020. And as we discussed at the last meeting, there's several pages, Ben Bontrager talked about it, I'll just highlight those again. Section 1, 2, and 3 really talk about the applicability of the ordinance, the definitions, and the concept plan, which is set forth in Exhibit B. The underlying zoning district is set in Section 4. The permitted uses are set forth in Section 5, which go a couple pages, the overlay districts, and then the general regulations are in Section 6 and Section 7. Section 7 is several pages, and then the development standards are set forth in Section 8. Those also are several pages, and again, Ben Bontrager talked about how detailed those are. Section 10 gets into the permitting and the procedures, and Section 11 talks about the vacation or right-of-ways. Section 12 talks about the annexation, so.
Okay. Any questions now the ordinance been read on second?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up for public comment. If you have any thoughts you'd like to share with us, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be heard, so.
Five minutes.
I mean, we'd like to keep it to five minutes, if possible, but, and try not to repeat, but time is theirs, so. Any public comment?
My name is Jane Hammack. I used to live in that area. I live in town now. What percentage of this ground is currently annexed into the city?
So, the ordinance we're currently talking about now, 100% of it is within the city limits.
100% of this is?
Yes.
And where is Perry Worth School in relation, in this little map? I haven't seen a bigger map to know where the school is.
It's right at the corner of 100.
400 and 300.
And 300.
And have considerations been given then for the school, and access for buses, and things like that for the children?
Again, so tonight, we're just considering the PUD, so the planned unit development, right? So, it's not actual, it's not a specific plan. It's the, essentially, the guardrails, the framework of how the, of what the building standards are for the area. So, it's, there aren't specific road layouts and like that yet.
There'll still be, okay. And is this the final reading for this tonight, after tonight?
It is. It's the second reading, yes.
Okay. And has everyone that owns property in this area been contacted and knows that this meeting was tonight?
Ben, if you want to talk on the notice requirements that we have, I mean, we've...
So, we're required to provide for the Plan Commission meeting notice to all adjacent property owners within 300 feet, which we did, and we also are required to put a notice in the paper for that meeting, which we did. And then I believe we also, in that same notice, mentioned the first reading of the ordinance, so there are no notice requirements necessarily for this meeting, but we did meet all the state statute requirements for notice associated with the Plan Commission the first council meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Any additional public comment?
Just to make sure that everybody knows that this is very, very preliminary, this just is okay, and what the Planning Commission already said is okay, and it's going to be a lot of years, and they have to jump through a lot of hoops to do what Jamie said regarding roads and things like that. That has to go before Planning Commission and so forth, so, I mean, there's going to be a lot of things that the developer has to do prior to anything happening out there. So, I just wanted to let you know that, that that's the way it works. It's a 20-year project.
Any additional comments from council? Okay. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2020-01.
I move that we approve ordinance 2020-1.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Disposed. Okay. Ordinance passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Next up is the Traffic Impact Study update. Kevin Cook.
Just wanted to take a few moments of your time, so I appreciate you having me here tonight, Mr. Mayor, and Madam Clerk, Treasurer, and council members, just to update you on the progress that we've made on our road impact study that we are currently under, currently under design on. You might recall that this was a project that you began funding last, last summer, early last summer. The total fee associated with developing a traffic impact fee study and ordinance was $294,500. You authorized us to proceed with $104,000 of that total amount, which was to account for traffic counting and the data collection. We have yet to be authorized for the remaining $190,500, which is for the analysis associated with the contract work. So, we did start with that traffic counting and data collection work last late summer, early fall. We started in August, just after school started. You might have seen the traffic counts, the tube counters across the street. You may have seen the intersection counters, the cameras that were on poles, typically mounted light poles or other utility poles at intersections around the city, not just all, not just within the city, though, but that we also counted intersections and road segments out into and including most of the roads and intersections within center township, just so that we could get an analysis as to where traffic is today and how traffic might change as Lebanon grows and expands out into center township. And that's where we are really at right now. We've completed all the data collection and are just compiling all that work at this point, and so we're ready to ask you for an additional appropriation to move fully into the analysis phase. So, steps going forward from this would be to finalize all the traffic data documents. I would anticipate we would have that done around the 1st of March, and then, assuming there would be a funding request for the additional analysis, we would move forward and complete that capacity analysis on the intersections and the roadways, existing capacity analysis sometime around April 1st. And then we would continue all of that analysis and building those models for projected growth and how that model would change as that growth was encountered. So, the next thing we would also really need to do if we are moving forward with all the analysis would be, one, we want to take the existing land use plan that was just approved with the comprehensive plan update, and we're going to, Ben and I, this will be an internal exercise, to really sort of put our best guess forward as to what a 10-year development threshold might look. So, all those new uses that we projected around the city as the city grows, we need to say, within 10 years, you know, is that, is that property associated with the Waterford development? How far into development is that going to be? And as an example, we would be making those same sort of decisions for all the properties around, around the city of Lebanon. So, once we would have those, those land use maps updated and those land use horizons updated, that's really where we would move forward on this analysis. So, we would need to form a, an impact fee advisory committee. This is something that is required by state statute. There would be up to three meetings of that committee. It's usually somewhere between one and three. That committee, per state statute, is appointed by the mayor. It is composed of not less than five people, but not more than 10 people, and 40% of the membership of that committee needs to represent the development, building, or real estate industry communities. This is, I'm summarizing from state statute, but that's, that is the state requirement to put this committee together. Once we would have that committee together, they would serve as advisors to our consultants as we begin to build this impact fee ordinance, and then ultimately would be their recommending adoption of that ordinance to this body. So, again, to sort of back up, we're at the end of the counting phase, or nearing the end of the counting phase. We've really done all the counts, but we're compiling that data and should have it all compiled within the next 30 days or so, and then we probably need to, once we have those land use maps updated, we're probably talking about eight months to wrap up the additional analysis and prepare the ordinances, working with the advisory committee before we would bring that back to you. So, we're talking about sometime around the end of the year for adoption. Keep in mind, once that is adopted, there's a six-month timeframe before we could start collecting fees on those traffic impacts. Also, I want to remind you, too, that the fees that we pay to develop this ordinance, that $294,500, we can pay ourselves back by the first fees that we collect. That money can be reimbursed to the city back into whatever, whatever funding appropriation level or lines that you take that out of. And then going forward, this is a way that we can, we can charge the development community for the impacts that they have on traffic. So, again, we're building an existing model of our existing traffic capacity, we're forecasting growth, and then we're forecasting with that growth how traffic improvements would need to be made to accommodate that. The fees that then we collect based off that analysis will go into making those improvements. Remind everyone, they cannot go into maintenance, you can't use traffic impact fees to resurface roads or, or, you know, replace street signs. These are projects that are typically like intersection widening, intersection improvements, traffic signals, those types of things. They could be for widening a road, they just can't be for resurfacing a road. But again, they're based on a very methodical analysis of the existing system capacity, the growth that we're projecting, and the burdens that that growth puts on to the system. So, tonight, just here really to give you an update, and we could talk more about the funding of the additional analysis phase of the project, if you would choose to move forward. That's, that's what we're here tonight. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and talk about this any further.
So, the amount we're looking at.
Hold on, Dick. I have a question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Kevin, will current residents pay traffic impact fees?
If a current resident wants to build a new house or do a development project, yes, but current residents in terms of living your daily life in your house that you live in now, no, you would have no impact based on an impact fee study or ordinance being put in place.
Yeah, thank you. Good.
Good question. I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Was, what's the fee, remaining fees left? $190?
$190,500.
$190,500, okay. With all the new development that we've got coming, and what we've got going on right now, you know, we started this road impact fee a year ago. I think it's very important that we get this thing in and get it finished. Also, we also have a park impact fee that we're studying that is trying to be completed as well. I would highly encourage us to move forward with the extra funding to, to complete this project. I've contacted Tanya, and I'm assuming that the best place for this to come from would probably be Rainy Day, I'm assuming. I'm guessing, I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we ask for additional funding out of Rainy Day of $190,500 to help complete this project this year and get it done and out of the way.
Is there a reason you're saying Rainy Day versus General Fund?
I just think Rainy Day'd probably be the easiest right now, unless Tony has, Tony has.
Well, we don't, we don't budget, we don't budget in the Rainy Day fund anymore, right? We don't budget money out of it.
I know, but we could ask for additional out of Rainy Day.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
What is it as long? I'll let our clerk treasurer advise what she thinks.
Well.
Either way, it's an additional appropriation out of the General Fund or Rainy Day, so.
It is. We've left Rainy Day alone for the last few years.
Yeah.
And that was sort of the plan we're on. We have the money in the General Fund to pay it, so we could ask for that additional. I mean, every year I make a deposit from General into Rainy Day.
Okay.
...with help from Baker Tilly. We can either lessen that by $200,000, $190,000, whatever. We can say, instead of moving 700, we're going to move 500. But I think, I would think you would just leave Rainy Day alone and take it from general.
I do, I would request whatever you think is the easiest.
I would-
You know, if you're fine with general fund, I'm fine with that as well.
Well, Tanya, do you have concerns getting additional approved? I know we have the money, but I know we have to go through a state process.
Right, and they don't approve anything January through March-ish, so we won't even ask for it until April because they're going to come back and say, why didn't you bring this up?
At budget time?
Yeah.
Yeah. We do have the food and beverage fund that hasn't been touched this year at all either, that has, that's not a state fund that we wouldn't require additional appropriation out of.
Well, we still have time, don't we? I mean-
It just depends on how fast we want to move on.
Yeah, I mean-
We do have time. I mean, I would, you know, the outline that they put before us here is really wanting authorization around March 1st. Now, with that being said, you know, I don't think waiting till April, if we need to, for a state-approved additional appropriation necessarily results in a month delay on the back end. You know, I think, I think as long as our consultant understands that we have, they have a favorable opinion from this body, that we can continue to work forward with this analysis and be ready to complete the project on that same timeframe.
I don't know why we couldn't wait till April and make that request. I mean, I-
We have roughly, what, $6 million in the general fund?
I'll leave that up to the council members unless they believe they want to do something different, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't wait till April to make the request out of the general fund.
Well, if it's not going to impact your schedule.
Right.
No, I think, I think we can adjust. This consultant's already been working with us, knowing that the contract is not fully funded, but obviously they're doing some good faith work for us.
They know we want to get it done.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good.
Further discussions, questions from Kevin?
We'll get with that.
Fine. Okay, we'll proceed on that path then.
So that would be a special appropriation that we'll need special notice-
We'll do a, we'll do a notice of additional appropriation for, for April or so.
Yeah.
Okay. And do we want to wait till then, or do we want to go ahead and take care of it at the next meeting? That's up to the-
For what? For the-
Well, to do the public notices, to request a special appropriation, that then would have to wait until April to go into the state, but we do have to take another action at this body before we can make that-
Don't we get the state notice first, though?
What notice is that from? You mean, the additional?
To even, yeah. Yeah, we have to have the, we have to have the state notice to even advertise the additional.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I thought it was us first, then the state.
It's approved the state first, and then we can do it locally.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, my bad. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning the traffic study? No? Okay. That concludes, do I have our old business? Anything from council? Okay, move on to new business then. And Tanya, you have something?
Right. Each year I come to the council, and basically it's just a notice from the State Board of Accounts that pursuant to IC Code 5-11-10.5, the following checks are outstanding and remain unpaid for over two years as of December 31st, 2019. They are void and shall be reseeded back into the fund in which they were drawn. We have two checks, one for $14.02 and one for $22.16, and these will go back into the park miscellaneous fund.
Okay.
Wow. All right.
Don't spend it all in one place, John, all right? Don't get too excited.
Couple lifeguards didn't need the money.
So we just need a motion to cancel, what are the check numbers?
46247 and 46248.
Okay, would entertain a motion to cancel the outstanding checks, number 46247 and 46248.
So move to-
We have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, those checks have been voided. Sorry, two years is too long. Any announcements, discussion from council? Okay, we'll move on to claims then, we'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Claims are approved, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, our next city council meeting will be February 24th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned. Thanks for watching.
Have a great trip.
I will.
One more. Here. One more.